Welcome. This is the City of Durango City Council Regular Meeting for August 3, 2021. And it's now 5:30 in the morning. Yeah. We have a roll call, please.
Certainly. Councillor Bosmans? Absent. Councillor Buell?
Here.
Councillor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Present.
And Mayor Baxter?
Present. Are there any, anyone who wants to identify an actual or perceived conflict of interest for anything on the agenda?
I do. Item 10.2, I think there's a potential for perceived conflict of interest. I live in Durango Crossroads.
All righty. So when we get to that item, you will step out of the room and then we'll send someone to bring you back and then we're complete.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Now we'd like to introduce our translator for this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Diana y estoy aquí por parte de la Cooperativa de Community Language, porque los organizadores de este evento se han comprometido a la justicia del lenguaje para poder crear un espacio seguro donde se practica la justicia, para poder escuchar en el idioma de su corazón usando interpretación simultánea. En un momento podrán ver un icono de un mundo con tres opciones en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Por favor, haga clic en el mundo y seleccione el idioma en el que guste escuchar y hablar. Por favor, recuerde hablar con una velocidad conversional al presentar para poder proporcionar una interpretación adecuada. Por favor, déjenos saber si tiene algún problema con la interpretación. Muchas gracias. Hello, everyone. My name is Diana and I am here from the Community Language Co-op because the organizers of this event have made a commitment to language justice in order to create a safe space where everyone can participate and listen in the language of their hearts by providing simultaneous interpretation. Here in just one moment, once interpretation is turned on, which I believe it is now, you will be able to see a globe icon with three options at the bottom part of your screen. So please select the language you will be speaking in and listening in by clicking on that globe icon. Please remember to speak at a conversational pace when presenting in order to provide adequate interpretation. There's any doubts or questions, please let us know and we'll help you out with whatever it is that you're needing this evening. Thank you all so much. Go ahead and select your language now.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Okay, so on to public participation. Do we have a list, Fay, for me to?
Oh, we do.
Thank you. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the City Council. And you have, you will have three minutes to speak and there will be a timer up on the board for you to pay attention to. Is there anyone else who did not get a chance to sign the public comment that wants to? Okay, great. So, Dorman McShane? And please state if you're a city resident or not also, and, and your name. Sorry, I forgot about all that.
Good afternoon. My name's Dorman McShan. I live here in La Plata County and I have a business, Precision Imports, in Durango. And I've had some semi-prepared notes, which I'm gonna cross out a few paragraphs here. I was 29 years old with a dream. When I, my dream was to have my own business in Durango, Colorado. And when I kept pestering this body to get a permit to start my business at 1025 Camino Del Rio, some people back in those days called it the truck bypass. After many meetings and much discussion, Bob Rank was the city manager sitting right there where Jose is. He gave some encouragement and the council voted to allow me to start. Now I'm 78 and I want to retire and enjoy the fruits of my labor. And my wife and I, Dottie, want to do a little traveling, spend some, some family time. But now this body and CDOT have inadvertently created a new challenge for all of us. The City of Durango and CDOT have a joint venture called the Access Control Plan and the plan has been revised and changed many times over the last 10 years. It needs one more revision and it needs it really fast. I'm asking how we might once more get a look at the section from Ninth Street to the New Holiday Inn at Eleventh Street. Let's put this short section on hold until we get our stoplight that's needed at Eleventh Street. I guess I'm asking this body if I can get this on the agenda for the next meeting. That's something to consider. This part of the plan will cause a tremendous hardship for my business and I may be the only business losing access that I've had for the last 49 years. I'll be looking across the barrier at Town Plaza and you can imagine if it was your business, how you'd feel if you got completely cut off. More importantly though, the traffic pressure that's created by this new plan is gonna eliminate left turns out of Town Plaza at their main entrance, which can be solved with the new light at Eleventh Street being synchronized with the light at Ninth, so that people can actually turn left coming out of the main entrance and turn left coming out of the new stoplight at Eleventh. So my time's up and I have a lot more to say and I'd like to get on the agenda.
Thank you. If, if, once the public comment is done, I will, well, maybe, so Jose, what's the best course of action for him to take so that we can, that this conversation could be had in the right forum?
I will ask Kevin, if I can, to do a little bit of an update. We have been meeting with him, I think Kevin also had a meeting with Mr. McShan. So Kevin, can you just provide a quick update of where we are on this process?
Good evening. Kevin Hall, Managing Director, Community Development. We have been interacting with Dorman McShan as well as the other neighbors for quite some time with CDOT on this Access Control Plan. The Access Control Plan is coming to a head where they want to start building more portions of it. You've seen some of the medians going to date. There is a desire for an intersection that's signalized at Eleventh through Town Plaza. City continues to work with that property owner to try to find resolution for a right-of-way to do so. It isn't moving as quickly as CDOT's plans for the balance of the ACP. Mr. McShan's been pretty clear in his concerns about access to his property. Those have been conveyed to CDOT. CDOT and Mr. McShan have been in communication. Hasn't been much in the way of resolution to Mr. McShan's concerns, but more desire to move forward with the ACP as its current configuration exists. I'm happy to continue to work with both Allison and her engineering staff and get ahold of CDOT, see if there's any additional things we can do in the interim and we can certainly report back on that matter. But the Access Control Plan is something that is, that is the city and CDOT in a partnership with the neighbors. However, some of the neighbors aren't particularly excited about some of the improvements that are being proposed and those, some of that work is planned for this year, so.
Thank you for the update. James Hoffman? Okay, great. All right, so we have no other public comment for this evening at this point?
Sorry, Mayor, to interrupt, we do have one person online who would like to speak.
Wonderful. That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, we have Harrison Went. Harrison, I'm gonna unmute you and if you could state your name and if you're a city resident, tell, put three minutes on the clock.
All right. Hello, my name is Harrison Went. I am a Durango city resident. I am calling to speak about an issue that's been brought to my attention by some working people down on Main Avenue and within the area around there about the continued parking tickets they get. As we all know, we're in a severe housing crisis within Durango. People are making $9 an hour, starvation wages, and are being asked to pay $25 when they get a parking ticket. I'm asking City Council to please consider finding space for our working people in downtown to park. If they can't find that, then considering permits for working people. It's becoming an increasing burden for these people as these fees add up and it is going to start deterring people from wanting to stay here and work as we need them to. I don't really have anything much further than this to add. I would request that the City Council take this up and start talking about it. We do have a group of people who are planning to come to a meeting coming up to talk about this issue and how it has affected them. If you can get this on an agenda at some point to talk about this, I know we would all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Harrison. Any others, Tom?
That's it?
Okay, great. So now we are on to review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the City Council, by a single motion, to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item, Agenda Item 8. Are there any consent agenda items that council would like to remove? Okay, great. So may we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Items 6.1 through 6.3 are approval of minutes. 6.1 is approval of the minutes of the July 6, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting. 6.2 is approval of the July 19, 2021 City Council Special Meeting. 6.3 is approval of the July 20, 2021 City Council Study Session. Item 6.4 is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing and appropriation for the Colorado Law Enforcement Assistance Fund, LEAF, grant, which would be Resolution 2021-38 if approved. Discussion and possible action for 6.5 concerning a resolution authorizing and appropriation for the State of Colorado Department of Law Post Grant, which would be Resolution 2021-39 if approved. Item 6.6 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Bregar Schultz Minor Subdivision and Lot Consolidation with a hearing to be held on August 17 at the regular City Council meeting. And item 6.7 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Farmers Fresh Market Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan and Major Site Plan Review, which would also be held on August 17 at the regular City Council meeting.
Thank you, Fay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
May we have a vote, please?
Certainly. Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baxter?
Yeah.
Or Nosworthy, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's easy to fall into that one.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Now we move on to Section 9, 9.1, Discussion and Possible Action Concerning a Motion to Convene an Executive Session for Purposes of Discussing the Purchase, Acquisition, Lease, Transfer, or Sale of Real, Personal, or Other Property Interest as Permitted in CRS 24-6-4024A, Specifically Relating to the Best Western Hotel Properties for Transitional Affordable Housing. Do I hear a discussion or a motion?
I'll move to, move into Executive Session.
Second.
May we have a, oh, is there any further discussion? May we have a vote, please, Fay?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
We will return after this session. I reconvene this meeting at 6:26. For the record, council met in Executive Session for the purposes of discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purposes discussing the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest as permitted in CRS 24-6-4024A, specifically relating to the purchase of the Best Western Hotel Properties located at 21382 Highway 160 West for Transitional Affordable Housing purposes. No decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, the next item is 10.2.1, a public hearing to consider the Crossroads Phase Two Replat Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan.
And Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, I'll be stepping out because I have the good benefit to live in Crossroads, Durango, and I want to make certain there's no perceived potential conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Nosworthy. We will send a staff member out to get you when this item is completed. Staff, oh, Nicole, hello.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Nicole Killian, Assistant Director of Community Development Department. And I am going to do the presentation for Crossroads Phase Two Replat. Craig Roser was the original planner, but yesterday was his last day. He is officially retired from the City of Durango after 30 years in community development. So I'm gonna cover this item tonight. So this item was originally scheduled for City Council on July 20, but there was an error with the notices and so that is why it was continued to this evening. It did go to the Planning Commission on June 28. And so what the applicant is doing, applicant is present, James Hoffman, and they are proposing to do a minor subdivision of the Crossroads property for Phase Two, which the developers still own. They're proposing to do three commercial lots and that would be Zoned Central Business District, just like the surrounding properties. I'm going to show you the lots. So this, this outline shows the current Phase Two site. So the three different lots. The northernmost lot is an existing building. The middle lot is mostly a parking area above a stone garage in the back. And then the southernmost lot is actually an old historic Baker building that is located behind, behind the 1021 development. And so they are proposing to do the three-lot subdivision. And it is first section, LUDC, Section 6363. Public hearings do need to be, do need to occur at Planning Commission and City Council and then staff would work with the applicant on the final plat approval after this hearing tonight. So just some images of the existing building. So this is the northern building and then this is in the central lot. And then this is the, you can kind of see the roof of the old historic structure behind the existing building. There's some more of the old historic Baker's House. So staff's been working with the applicant on the plat. We have received some public testimony at, before the Planning Commission from James Cunningham. His big questions were potential impacts to the residential uses in Crossroads building, especially with the concerns and the noise, concerns at Eleventh Street Station that are occurring. And so what we've told him is that at the time that the uses come in, we'll have that review. If they do anything that's outdoors like Eleventh Street Station, there is a, a public process for that. But at this time, we don't know what uses would be, especially in that middle portion that doesn't even have a structure yet. Then we also received some comments from John Hobby, who reiterated some agreements that were made for gas, gas line relocation on the old Baker's House property. And the applicant is working with the current, he has an assignment agreement with the current person who's under contract for that Baker's property, that they will take over the responsibility of relocating that gas line. All the easements are in place on the plat. And so we'll just continue to make sure Mr. Hobby is good with the easements on the plat. But as, we have not heard anything since we've had that last communication with him. Planning and engineering staff have reviewed it and the subdivision does comply with the city subdivision requirements and criteria. And so there is a recommended motion. And I know the applicant is present, I'm not sure if he has anything he wants to add.
Let me go ahead and open the public meeting and then we'll allow the, so I'm officially opening the public meeting and if the applicant would like to make a presentation, we'd love to hear from you.
Mayor, there's no one online waiting to comment?
There's no one online for, for a comment on this?
Right.
Thank you.
Well, in that case, I'll make this very brief. James Hoffman, 1030 East 10th Street Place, Durango. Hoffman Architects and sole member of Downtown Durango Investments. I think Nicole did a very fine job describing what we're trying to do. Just to give you a very brief history, I designed a building for this large site back in 2007. Obviously, we had some financial issues. The meltdown kind of caught us midstream and we had to cancel those plans. And in the last 13 or so years, I've been trying to find a partner to develop the property. I think by splitting off these two wings and shrinking the property down a bit, we may have a better chance of getting something built there, something slightly smaller scale. So I'm here to answer questions or respond to public comment. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And is there any public present who wants to make a comment? No? Any questions by council? Okay, I'm going to officially close the public hearing and thank you very much. And then, do I hear a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the Crossroads Phase Two Replat Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan, subject to the findings and conditions as stated in the Planning Commission's staff report and minutes of June 28, 2021, and authorize the mayor to sign the final subdivision plat upon completion of all final plat recommendations as determined by staff.
And I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to Introduction of Ordinances, 12.1. An ordinance for purposes of amending the zoning of real property located within the City of Durango, Colorado pursuant to Chapter 27, Section 6-3-2-3 and 2-1-2-6 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Durango, and declaring an effective date in parentheses of Rosemary Lane.
Yeah, I was gonna wait till Councillor Nosworthy returned.
Oh, yes. Shall we send a staff person? Here she comes. Wonderful. Welcome back. So we've moved on to the introduction of ordinances, amending the zoning of real property on Rosemary Lane.
This is, this is the ordinance, O 2021-18. This follows a public hearing that was conducted some time ago. There was a delay in getting all the details together, but this ordinance, but the properties now, those details have been worked out. And this is ordinance to annex, a routine ordinance to annex the property known as Rosemary Lane.
Okay. And so?
O 2021-18.
So what you're looking for then is a motion?
Motion.
To do such? Okay. Are there, is there a motion, please?
A motion to approve ordinance O-21-18.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nosworthy?
Yes.
And Mayor Baxter?
Yes. So we move on to administrative with Jose Madrigal, our city manager, and we, city update.
I do not have a city update this, this evening for the council, but just to let you know that I will be going on vacation starting after this meeting. So I'll be back on Monday.
Wonderful. Have a good time. So 13.2, Discussion Regarding Date for Workforce Housing Workshop.
Mayor and council placed this on the agenda after some discussion regarding, try to find a date that works for the, for the council to have this housing, workforce housing workshop. We are trying to find the dates that, that worked. Was just informed that there were, I guess, three or four of these dates that may not work at the moment, but wanted to provide you of the polling that we've done of the availability of the mayor and council. Here is kind of what it looked like as of this afternoon. We still are trying to find a date that would work for the council and then that decision, whether it needs to be all of council or a majority of council to get this meeting scheduled. We definitely are doing our best to try to get there. It is a moving target, trying to get all of the council's council leaders synced up with the consultant who, as we can understand, that workforce housing is a very big thing right now in the state of Colorado, so, and in the nation, actually. And so he is very busy with other clients that are becoming available and scheduling him for his time. So I open this up for the council to have discussion on any type of guidance they'd like us to provide in scheduling this workshop for the council.
So the changes that Jose is referring to are mine. And after we had what we thought was an agreement on some dates in August, I went ahead and reinstituted a vacation that I canceled last year in order to attend council meetings. So at this point, I plan to be out of the state, November 27 through November 30.
September.
Sorry, September 27 through September 30. Thank you. And so, because I thought we had, I thought we had some dates settled in August, so I'm, I don't know what to do with this.
Okay. I have, I'm seeing in September, just two weeks. Is this based on the availability of the consultant?
It's availability of consultant, but then it's also availability of the, some of the counselors. When we first talked, we had a discussion was that there was a...
CML for one.
Yeah, there's, you got CML. I'm trying to think, but there was a, a little bit of guidance or direction that we needed clarification on, do we need all of the council or just a majority of the council? Because there are vacations in September that have been planned by several council members that are on here and that has taken out two or three of the weeks in September. So that's what also makes it very difficult with the days of those vacations, plus the consultant's availability, trying to line all of them up, has been like playing Tetris on like level 100, so.
Right. And, and I believe that the original dates that we thought that we had at least four counselors and, and actually I thought for a while we had five, which were in August, we no longer have capability of because Councillor Bosmans said he wasn't available and then subsequently, we've lost the availability of the consultant.
That's correct.
So he's not available in August?
He's no longer available that last few days of August. The consultant. And as well as Councillor Bosmans, I believe, did not have availability in August.
Could I just suggest that, you know, the, the nation is struggling with this housing and so, and workforce housing, but we're particularly feeling it out here. I know at the end of August, I'll be going to the CAST meeting, the Colorado Association of Ski Towns, and our two whole days are, are dedicated to the urgency of addressing workforce housing and the funding opportunities that are available. So I, I would like to suggest, I, I thought the early September was good because, one, I'd be coming back from that meeting and, and might have some other new ideas, but also I'm, I'm really, I think we all are hearing from our constituents about the lack of housing and the lack of inventory and I would really like to move sooner rather than later. And I would also add that while I think it's highly desirable to have us all present, you know, we're not all present tonight and that the reality is that may be hard to, to always achieve. So I feel a sense of urgency and, and I will say for my own self, I postponed my holiday to be available on the 2nd and 3rd of, of September for this purpose. I was going to start on the 1st or 2nd for my holiday and I'm willing to wait so that we can possibly get this done earlier.
Jose, may I ask a clarifying question? Originally, I think we had planned, was it two half-days for this conversation or was it two full-days? What were we planning timewise?
We were planning a full day. There is an option that we could do two full days with the consultant that he provided in his proposal. So that's where it was, but it was always a full day.
But was it, it was two full days?
Two full days is what he provided as a second option.
Well, I also think that this conversation impacts our budget planning and so I'm, I'm concerned about that too and, and the urgency as Mayor Protem Nosworthy mentioned. I don't, so Jessica, do you, you haven't spoken yet. Do you have anything you might want to add to the conversation?
I mean, I think it's just tricky, unfortunately, with everyone's schedule right now. I think that it's important that we could have done budget-wise before October, probably. I think it's... I think it's unfortunate that, I mean, that even the consultant's schedule is constricted as well. And then all of our schedules. I mean, obviously, wherever we can get the most people there, I, for, you know, paying for a consultant, I would like the most amount of city councilors there, clearly. But I don't know the right answer.
Well, it, it seems obvious that we have no time in August. And it's pretty obvious that in early September, we don't have enough counselors to, to do it.
You know, I, can I read?
Sure.
How much cost are we looking at for this?
It's $12,500 for one full day, $14,000 for two days.
So just a thought that I'll throw out there, two, two, two points I have. I agree that this is, we, we all want to address housing. And we recognize the urgency of addressing it. We also know that housing is not something we're going to solve very immediately. We're not going to make an impact next month because it takes time. And what we're talking about here is an investment in our team education because we're going to bring this consultant in to educate us on the best alternatives to move forward and, and with staff. And so ideally, in, under that situation, ideally as a team, we would all be there because we're making in our, decisions in ourselves as a team. If even one person misses, then trying to bring forward that team to move forward and make progress as a council is going to be more difficult because whoever missed that won't be quite up to speed with the other team members who were. And recognizing that housing doesn't happen that quickly, the reality is, is these decisions might not even be made this year. It's nice to bring people forward along. My desire would be to be as inclusive as we possibly could be. That said, I can be available on September 2nd and 3rd. Now my schedule has changed, and I didn't know anyone was sending this out. But, so, I mean, even though what we're talking about, basically, what I think we were talking about unfortunately was the conversation of me missing or you missing, Kim. And that's too bad because we also have another counselor here who's not present and able to stick up for themselves. But I, I can be available, but I still, and that does, those days do work for me. Friday doesn't work as good as Tuesday, the 2nd. But, but I, I just want to, you know, basically go on the record saying, I think having all of us as a team there, we're all elected officials. We're investing in our education to make a difference as a community. You know, we all, we're all ultimately going to have to vote on any decision we bring forward. So it'd be nice to be able to include everybody. So the only other thing to consider is, is whether we can, number one, re-ask Counselor Bosman's if he might be available on that earlier date in September since Mayor Baxter is not available the last week of September. And if not, I think we have to look at October, clearly. Well, we, we have to, unless we move forward without him, but.
So the $14,000 is predicated on the two days being back-to-back, I'm assuming? Because otherwise, there would be more travel.
There would be more travel that we would pay for, but I think we could still do two full days for $14,000. We would just get extra on the travel.
Yeah, so it would be more than $14,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's 12,000 to 15,000, I think, is what I saw.
It's 12,500 plus expenses, $14,000 would be plus expenses as well.
Yeah, it's an investment. So that's my thought.
Well, so the comment on nine and, the 9/2 and 9/3, but Counselor Buell is not, cannot do the 3rd. So, and I think splitting the dates apart is going to cost, I mean, I'm not worried about... So $14,000 plus travel expenses is an investment in the millions and millions of dollars that we'll need to spend on workforce housing to make it work. I'm not, I'm not really concerned about that part. I agree with you that the education that we will get from this and the guidance and the suggestions and the direction that we can take from there is critically important. And so I also agree that it would be better, as I've said in the past, to always have all counselors there, which is what I thought we had in August. So that's why this whole thing's very frustrating for me. Excuse me for a minute. We could consider...
I'll also say that I would like to see us go forward in September. Ideally, sure, we all want to all be together in the ideal world, but things come up. And even if we wait till the end of, to schedule this for the end of September, we have no guarantee that all five of us will be able to make it. Anything can happen, emergencies at work or anything, so I...
I'm going to throw out one other thing, though. I do only, I think that, I know that Counselor Buell is not available on Friday, the 3rd.
Right.
And there's a chance that I'm not available on Friday, the 3rd, too. So it would just be two of you.
No, I was just suggesting this, the, the September 2nd, Thursday?
The one day instead of the two days.
Okay.
Yeah, or the option to be, could do September 2nd, and that a later date to be scheduled if we felt it necessary could possibly bring in the consultant later. But I would really support a full day on September 2nd to keep this moving and to inform our thinking, inform some of the big decisions we're going to be making, and also our opportunities for, for pursuing funding at this critical time.
So I'm, I'm going to postpone my vacation for the second time, for the second year in a row. And I'll be here on the 27th and 28th. Counselor Bosman's could not be here on the 28th, but that's all I can give him, so.
So perhaps we could meet on the 2nd, and the follow-up could be on the 27th.
You said your what day are you going to be there? No?
It would just be increasing money for travel.
I didn't know which day you said you were going to be there.
I said I'm willing to postpone my vacation for two days, on the 27th and the 28th. And, and I, the, the 2nd is great, and the 27th is great. So either way, Counselor Bosman's will not be there on one day. So we're either going to have to be comfortable with that, or...
Well, if you, one other question, if you're really talking about having to do that, you know, does it, does it, could, could we just inquire about the possibility of his availability like that next week, when you may have be back from your vacation?
I personally, I, I don't want to put it off into October because we really do need to be giving direction to, to staff on funding for any programs that we might want to initiate in 2022. And I think it's going to be important for them to know what council's recommendations are and the direction we want to take because we're looking at several million dollars. This isn't a $40,000 investment. This is several million dollars. And it does affect the general fund, and it may affect other areas. And I really think staff needs to be aware of what direction we're trying to take. So I, I personally would not support moving into October.
Okay, I was doing that for your benefit.
No, thank you.
So we do have an option of the September 2nd as the first all-day. Then if we looked at September 27th, that would give us time in between to possibly do more research. We might have some assignments based on that. And we could come back and maybe start to have clearer direction by the end of September, which can inform budget and many other things we pursue.
The one other option, though, that, that, you know, Mayor Baxter is suggesting she is available at the end. And on that one, that, at least on Monday, we will all be here for the whole day.
But Counselor Bosman's will not be here on the 2nd, so either way, we lose him for one of those days.
But we get him for half, and we don't have to pay the travel twice if the, if the account, the, you know, the consultant comes down.
So what dates are you suggesting?
The ones you just proposed, the 27th and 28th. Unless you don't want to do that, I thought you just said you did.
So obviously, that's two days out of my vacation instead of one. So obviously, I would prefer, I like the idea, actually, of the 9/2 and 9/27 because of exactly what you said, is we may have homework. So I personally would prefer that.
Do you know if that's an option, Jose? Have we even asked him if it's an option to split it up, the two days?
I'd imagine so. If that's what the council wanted, I would
Ask.
do everything in my power to make that happen.
Well, why don't we look into that? See how that goes.
So does that mean we're holding September 2nd and September 27th on our calendars? I'm willing to put that in there now. Okay, thank you.
We can all pencil it in until we get confirmed, I guess.
Well, I'll confirm it. It'll be like, go start this event when I walk out. So I just want to make sure from the direction from the council is 2nd and 27th.
Yes.
I've got my direction.
And either way, Counselor Bosman's can attend one day.
Okay.
So that's good.
Wanted to verify. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to 15, Board and Commission Council Liaison Reports. So does anyone have a board and commission report?
I can start. I have the Creative Economy Commission and the Strategy and Long-Term Finance Advisory Board. The CEC met on July 27th. The Common Threads Public Art Project is out for rebid right now. Bids are due at 3:00 PM on August 17th. Anyone who's interested can go to durangoco.org/bids for information. So hopefully, we get some bids this time. The Durango Art Brigade has 16 of the 17 art projects installed around Durango. Some of them will start to come down as winter goes into effect, so just kind of be on the lookout for that. We looked at all the Durango Create grant applicants, and they all presented to us during the meeting. We approved grant money for five of the projects, which is exciting. So there'll be some new art installations going up for those. That was the CEC, and then the Salt Fab. We discussed the 10-year fund forecast progress. They're hoping to have this completed for Salt Fab review around November-ish is the goal. And then for the smaller funds, potentially in like a calendar year, hopefully. And then we discussed the capital projects funds reserve policy and the special revenue funds reserve policy at the meeting as well. So, here you go.
Wonderful. Do you have any other reports you'd like to give that are non-board and commission?
No, I'm good. Yeah.
Any other counselors?
No, I didn't have a, a report. I just wanted to ask council and also wanted to recognize Christopher Blevins and his 14th place finish in the Olympics, and wondered if there's anything we might want to consider, you know, inviting him for a city council meeting, maybe, where we could present him with, I don't know what? Key to the City, he can certainly have that. But, you know, at least a huge congratulations and an opportunity to be recognized here locally. I, I would love to do that because I would like to, you know, phenomenal dedication, commitment, and devotion to the sport and role model for our community and our children. He's been a stellar, stellar role model. So I was just wondering if there's something we might want to consider doing.
And I would add to that if the opportunity is possible, which it probably isn't because he's not living in the United States right now, but Sep Kous, Durango child and grown-up and, and resident here who won a stage in the Tour de France.
Both of them at the same time would be great.
Yeah, I don't know if he could be here, but at least we could acknowledge him.
And his mom lives here, so yeah. So maybe we could consider doing that at an upcoming city council meeting and think about what, at least in presentations?
We'll reach out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else, Melissa?
That's it for me.
So I have three meetings, just to give a quick update on. First of all, the Infrastructure Advisory Board meeting was supposed to be yesterday, but we had some technical difficulties. So we will be meeting next week, Monday, from 4:30 to 6:00, and they'll have the Zoom link taken care of. So we are discussing the water master plan, some of the drought issues that we pretty much look at on a regular basis. I also participated as the liaison in the Community Relations Commission, our advisory board meeting. And a couple of things came out of that. One, you know, again, tonight, we're doing translation. Those of you that are listening, you can have live translation. If Spanish is your, the language that you're most accustomed to, there is an option for that. If you need it in English, there's an option for that as well. What we also talked about on the translation was a real emphasis on things like the welcome center, any surveys that we're doing in the community, whether it's a water survey, a recycling survey, a transit survey, making certain that those are available in Spanish. We talked about the trails, signage around the trails, signage around the website, particularly the PDFs. And I know we're making progress on all of this, and I appreciate it. That was a part, as I mentioned earlier, resolutions and proclamations and how to make them more, almost a month-long celebration rather than just a day. And then the advisory boards were really interested in what we, as counselors, were going to be doing with DEI training at the, at CML. And I was really pleased to provide some of the descriptions of those trainings. While we're not required to attend those, they are, you know, there's other options during that same time. It is a robust offering, so I thought that was very, very helpful. The other thing I, I wanted to mention is that Melissa and I serve on the working group for the Wildfire and Watershed Protection Fund. And that's a group that's been meeting pretty much every week. Most of you will recall that we have Hal Doherty also involved with that, along with the county. And we were working on kind of a draft creation agreement, what we might look like if we were a standalone entity. But we're also now having discussions with being, with maybe the county being the lead on that. And, and then us being, working within that and the fire district, but them being perhaps the, the primary. And in some ways, that makes sense, but we want to look at all options because there are, whatever we do, it does impact our ability to attract the millions of dollars that are going to be available for fire mitigation. What we're doing, and this is what we hope to have available relatively soon by that, perhaps by that August 17th, we want to have a, the outline of our plan, what that will look like, and the partners that we will be working with, and some of the, the more intense zones that need mitigation. We want to have a job description of the kind of person we expect to hire. We're also hoping to have a preliminary list of funding opportunities and deadlines so that we're on top of that. And then finally, Chief Doherty is hoping to have an outline of some work that he can begin, what we called low-hanging fruit, that he can begin early, possibly in the, the new year, in addressing fire mitigation in areas west of Durango. But because of the prevailing winds, if a fire started there, it could impact Durango quite significantly. One of the things we often say in this meeting of us all working together with the county is it doesn't matter where the fire starts, it's where it's headed, right? So you, you can't, you want to make certain that you're not drawing some kind of geographic line, but that we're protecting the larger community, and that's been the effort here. I don't know, Melissa, if you want to add anything to that summary?
I was just going to say that the meetings have been really very productive. And it's been, it was very helpful to have Imogen there. Imogen, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. But it's very, very helpful to have her attending us and helping us, and she's really getting the documents together. And the lawyers are meeting on Monday with the city and the county and the fire to go through what type of agreement it will be. And, and that, and, and that will determine a lot about how we move forward. So we should have some answers, like Counselor, or Mayor Protem Nosworthy said, by the 17th.
This is, we're, we're moving it, and we're trying to move it at the fastest pace possible.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mayor Protem?
No, oh, yes, I do have one more thing. True confession, I serve on the board of Playfest. And this week, starting on Thursday, Playfest will be in Durango. We have actors from New York City and LA, playwrights from LA and Denver, and directors from all over. We'll, Ari arriving in town. If you're not familiar with Playfest, they take a play, a writer takes a play, brings it and gets to work with actors and refine it. And for the first time, we're doing a community play on Thursday where a local playwright had the benefit of working with one of our esteemed colleagues who's quite renowned in the area of theater. They've been working to refine that play. We have actors, local actors, performing that we are paying. This is not volunteer service. And then we made that free, and we also have an improv group providing. We made that free to the... we also have an improv group providing, we made that free to the public, and all of those seats were taken within a few hours of going live. So that's Thursday, and we have other events throughout the week. So just one more example of the arts in our community.
Thank you. I attended the Regional Housing Authority Board Meeting, and we were, we were moving it around through the four municipalities, so we have the county, the city, Bayfield and Ignacio, we were in Bayfield this last time, we will be in Ignacio, no, we'll be at the county offices next time, and then Ignacio, and then here. And the direction that we're taking is, our goal is to get housing units on the ground now, so, within the next year, and one of the ways that we may be able to do that is to support some of the housing projects that are already ongoing, such as Bayfield's purchase of land and the things that Ignacio is working on. The first thing we have to do is get an intergovernmental agreement approved, we have a team working on that, and we're hoping at our next meeting to have something close to a final form, it won't be exact, but something close, so that we can bring it back to the respective boards and commissions for approval, and then at that point, we'll move forward with a leadership structure. So we've, I, we've chosen to move forward with the idea of having a company or a group be the leader of the R H A, because we want the expertise that's needed for funding, for collaboration with the other housing authorities, for administration of the projects, as well as administration of any grants and things like that that come through, and then also coordinating the developers for the actual projects, and bringing people, bringing a firm in that has expertise in those areas where they know, because it's amazing what's happening in this industry right now over the last six, eight months, even a year, and probably more, but it's just gotten so intense now. There's a lot of companies that this is what they do as far as development, they just come into regions and areas and communities that need development, they, they build what it is you want, and then they kind of go away. So they're not, they aren't local, which is a drawback, however, it leaves our local builders still available to do all the housing that they like to do and that they want to do and that they're successful at. And so this is, we're talking volume housing here, not individual or ten units or twenty units, we're talking hundreds of units. So that, as soon as we get an approved I G A, we'll move forward with doing a request for qualifications for that position, and we'll see where we go from there. I'm very excited, this is, has huge opportunities for the communities. Okay, anything else, anyone? Thank you, meeting adjourned.